Seven o'clock, we'll call here in order. Mr. Bedding, will you lead us to the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record show all board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comments, sheets, onto reports, district administrators' report.
So four updates for the board and the public. First of all, our community resource officer, Officer Jared Wilson, started last week with the district. Again, employed through the city, but started on campus last week. He'll be part of our welcome back tomorrow, and then will be part of our district and our community throughout. Tomorrow is our first day back with all employees. We had our new employee orientation today, had a luncheon with them, and they were, got a little bit more of a deep dive into some of the procedures that we have around here. All of our staff will be back tomorrow, and then our first day with students will be a week from tomorrow, on Tuesday, September 5th. And then a reminder to the board and parents that there is no school for students on Friday, September 8th. That is traditional fair Friday, and so there will be no school for students on that Friday. So next week will be a three-day week for our students, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. State convention in January is not that far away. We have blocked hotel reservations or have a block of hotel rooms available down in Milwaukee. The state convention this year, the school year, is January 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2024. Think about that. We would love it if as many board members could make it down there. It's a very valuable experience. There's a lot of great seminars, a lot of great networking that you can do and listen to and partake in. Let Laura Steele know if you have any questions. Let myself know if you have any questions, and then let Laura know, one way or another, yea or nay, on whether or not you would be able to attend that. Again, we'd love for as many of you to attend as possible, again, January 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2024, and it's downtown Milwaukee, downtown Milwaukee at the convention center. And then finally, just a small change to some committee meetings. So the first Thursday of September is September 7th. However, Policy cannot meet on that night, and so they are going to push that up to Wednesday, September 6th. That will be a 6:15 start for Policy. Again, next Wednesday, September 6th, at 6:15. Curriculum will still meet on September 7th, but they will not start until 8 o'clock in order to accommodate some board member schedules. I believe that's it. Does the board have any questions for me regarding any of those things? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Board member reports.
The Personnel Negotiations Committee met on August 17th. We discussed the beginning processes of reviewing job descriptions, getting some of those up to date. We do have a handful that are not been reviewed in several years, so we're going to have a rotation of those to try to get everything up to date. Also discussed the open benefits and just what that structure is going to be for moving forward on that. And we also reviewed the draft budget, which we will be discussing later this evening. And then Foundation met on the 1st. We had discussion on the outstanding alumni for 2023. We had three people that were nominated for that. Discussed the homecoming 23 as well. The 29th was homecoming. Had the parade, obviously, the football game, we did that evening as well. The ceremony for the outstanding alumni is at 6:00 PM that evening. And we also approved finances for what is going to be called the Hornet Hub, which is in the guidance office, to supply students with kind of emergency needs on pens, pencils, notebooks, kind of everyday things, so in case they have preferred it, some other things or don't have them, don't have access to them, that they would be able to pick those up at no cost to the student, no questions asked, they can just come in and help themselves to those pieces. So that's all we have.
Buildings, property, and transportation met after a postponement. Our official meeting was Wednesday, August 23rd. We covered our regularly agenda item, which is the yearly schedule at the plans. Got some updates on projects. The roof in the portion that was supposed to be done this summer has been completed, and everything went well. Also, some inner office placement of walls and things to better facilitate the administrative team. Scheduled additional walkouts for the next couple months. Next month, we'll be touring the partner school. The next item we covered was the Hornet Wings update. All three schools now have them. The building principals are in possession, and my understanding is they were here for super registration. We covered disposal of items and the process used in things of low value, example, old tables or old desks, for example. And we also covered the after-school program, CCLC bids for vehicles, and that'll be on later tonight's agenda. Also sidebar, if I may, on a personal note, my family and I went on a whirlwind 12-day, six-campus tour for my daughter, who's going to be a senior. And one of the things that kept coming up, and I encourage the, especially high school administrative team, is what activities outside of school, outside of the curriculum, are students involved in? And so any sort of Youth for Change or Partners for Prevention, anything that can kind of add to their resume by also bettering the community, I would highly encourage steering our kids in that direction of how they can help elsewhere. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve prior media minutes, August 14th, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman, any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Obey.
Aye.
Aye. Obey.
Aye.
Aye.
On to financial items, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated August 22nd, 2023.
One second.
Motion by Mr. Dowdner, second, and Mr. Bailey. Uh, Mr. Bosworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would add that essentially all of our early released checks this month were to Amazon. This is a high purchasing time of year, and we hit our credit limit, so we released the money early so that we could, we wouldn't want to slow down the other folks that are trying to get ready for their classroom. So that's essentially all of those ACH transfers all went to Amazon and got released before this meeting.
Discussion? Questions? Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Scott?
Aye. It's Monday, I'm sorry. It's Monday.
So, and to 6:00 P., approval of invoices.
I move we approve community first payment general check and account checks number 85553 through number 85560, and ACH number 232400112 through 232400150, for a net total of $71,172.26. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Traxel. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
Sure, a couple things. Check number 85555. That's a payment for our musical, but I would like to add that our foundation funds our musical every other year, and the money comes to us, and then we pay for the costs. I would also point out ACH PLTW, engineering participation. So Project Leadway is a curriculum, an engineering curriculum, and we have not had that for the last couple of years because we haven't had a teacher licensed or, not licensed, but just certified to do that, but we have a teacher on staff now who did some training this summer, so we're able to bring that back. So you'll see our participation fee for that this month.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions from the board?
Would a course like that for a student have a fee that they would be paying for that semester's course load?
I don't, Project Leadway does not have any student course fees.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 All right, on to consent agenda, Mrs. Coleman?
Motion to accept the donation of items supporting Mrs. Bocken's learning in style on donorschoose.org, valued at approximately $1,033.3 from donorschoose.org per policy 7230. Motion to approve adult lunch prices for 2023-2024 at $4.55. And motion to approve the acceptance of up to four additional exchange students for 2023-24 with an administrative approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve consented items?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Wertz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion? Oh, hold on. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank donorschoose.org for their generous donation. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Wertz, discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 To agenda item nine, information or discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
Okay, so you'll see there are two attachments. The first one is the support staff. We're doing pretty well and getting all of our positions filled. We do still have two night custodians that we have open, as well as two openings in our food service department. Those are basically the extent of our support staff. And then the openings that you see in the certified staff, almost all of those, with the exception of the art position, will be acted on later this evening. The art position is one that we knew we would have a difficult time filling. We were optimistic, but we do have a plan in place to have that, those classes met at our high school. So that is what we have for openings in the district as of right now.
Any questions from the board? All right, to 9B, review of the 2023-24 draft budget.
Okay, good evening. We're here to give you an update of the draft budget. So just for a second review of the timeline, so June 15th, we talked to a committee, July 10th, we came back to the full board, following that same sort of pattern here. August 17th, met with a committee and have already that exact same information to the full board. 15th of September is a big day, those are student counts. Those will drive our revenue limit and the biggest portion of our funding. And then in October, things will get much more concrete. We'll have a final draft budget on annual meeting, and then we'll set the levy at the end of October. You've, inside of board docs, there are two documents. There's this powerpoint presentation, and there's also a copy of the draft budget that the board members are looking at in paper version. I have put everything, we've got another column, so column E is the August information, and also highlighted in red, anything that's different since the last time we spoke. And that's primarily what I'll talk about today, is any of the changes that have happened since I saw you last. Just the final, just a kind of summary here. When we left you, we were anticipating about a $400,000 deficit heading into the school year, and there was a few unknowns, mainly the state budget was one of the big ones that we weren't totally sure about, so we'll address that today. Since July 10th, these are some changes, and we'll get into some more detail of each one of these. We got, we got some equalized aid estimates, still estimates. Open enrollment numbers are still fluid. Interest rates are up on cash accounts. We've added the CCLC grants monies. We added some special education staffing expenses, and then we'll talk a little bit about the biennial budget and $325 per pupil, what that effectively did with our budget. Okay, so equalized data estimates. In July, the state gave some, again, just estimates, but they're the best we have right now. So if you look in line 6 and 14, those should be in red. The state estimated we would receive more aid than we had maybe last year or we had been anticipating, so that's positive, but then you need to remember that our revenue limit is fixed, and it's made up of, A, we get from the state and money that we're allowed to levy and tax from our community. So if we get more aid from the state, we still have a hard cap on how much money we're allowed to use, so that means that the property tax levy may decrease the balance stat. The opposite would happen in some communities if they find out from the state they're going to receive less aid, that means that their levy would have to increase to make up for that, to get to that same dollar value, which again is driven by student enrollment, so that's why these are estimates at this point. September 15th numbers will be crucial in that regard. Open enrollment numbers. Again, the 15th is the official, where we'll have official data, but over the course of the summer, in talking with the district office and the building principals and just watching the trends, generally speaking, we feel like we have a few less kids that are open and rolling out, and we feel like we have a few more kids that are open and rolling in. In no way, shape, or form am I saying, you know, the total number of kids open rolling out is kind of zero. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying it is, seems to be tipping a little bit in the right direction. So we've adjusted both of those dollar values, dollar values in line 22 and 58, to keep a little bit more money and send a little less out. Line 19, we felt like we should adjust the interest rates. Interest rates are still high, right? They have those things high to counteract inflation, and so we have cash accounts, so we just thought that we ought to adjust that up a little bit to be more realistic. So that's really all there is to that. Line 112, at the, I believe it was August 14th meeting, maybe it was the meeting prior, we approved some additional staffing in special education. That was due to some ID changes or students transferring in the district, those things we happen to have, but we need to reflect that in the budget, so that line 112, show that in red, so that increasing that expenditure will need to, will need to increase to cover those new staff numbers. Okay, and then the biennial budget. The biennial budget was passed, and they said that districts will receive $325 per pupil increase in revenue limit, so we were thinking, well, okay, do the simple math, X number of kids, multiply that by 325, that's a much revenue level increase. However, after more investigation, we're not necessarily going to see a dollar-for-dollar increase in that regard. The state budget formula has some safeguards built in, so that your budget doesn't change a lot from one year to the next. Number one, there's a three-year average, so you're not going to see an immediate increase on all the new kids that will come into your district. Number two, they provide declining enrollment one-year exemptions. Well, they'll, they'll keep your revenue limit higher for one year, so you can adjust. And then number three, they have something called the whole harmless clause, which is very similar to declining enrollment exemption. It's just a dollar value. We know you spent this much money last year, we anticipate you having this much, we're going to allow you to keep that up. So when the state looks at a school's budget, and they had a whole harmless clause built in there, they take the $325 and they apply it against the whole harmless clause first. In other words, maybe the school's budget was a million, and they had a whole harmless clause of $50,000, okay, the state felt like we should be able to spend $950,000. They were going to give us an extra 50 in revenue limit, but they're not going to give us the 325 on top of that. They're going to say, well, you were supposed to really be at $950,000 anyways, that's where we're going to start you. We're going to use that money to work that whole harmless clause out first. So hopefully that kind of makes sense. Again, it's, can be frustrating, but those, those factors are in there to kind of help school districts, weather storms up or down from year to year. It was in there, so we have to use that dollar value against there, so really, instead of 325 per pupil, after you work out the whole harmless clause that we estimate, it will be about $78 per pupil. Still positive money in the right direction, just not quite as much as maybe we had been anticipating. So at this point here in August, you put all those two factors in, trending in the right direction, and at this point, we think maybe we have a budget deficit of about $100,000. Still allowed fluidity to this, still looking for a few positions that we mentioned, still a little bit of time before school goes to gain or lose staffing or gain or lose students, but we're getting closer. Two things still not in this budget, we did not put the Parker School operating budget in yet. Not going to be a big budget, but it's still not in there, and we also did not have anything in there regarding a sale of the Jefferson building. That's still up in the air, so that's another kind of wild card factor we have to figure out. Obviously, the Parker School would be an expense, and sale of Jefferson would be a revenue. Hoping those two might offset each other. Okay, again, we just talked about this, but next time we'll talk sometime in September, probably after the official student count, and I'll mention whatever out there. Next staff, no information, or excuse me, no motion is necessary tonight, this is for information only. We're out continuing to hire staff. Also, we, we've been working with Co-Bus and the bus company, and we feel like there's maybe one key in route that we're looking at, trying to do some consolidation, so there may be a minor cost savings in that area as well, but we don't have those numbers worked into the budget yet. Questions?
The whole harmless clause, is that something that is board-determined, because it seems in this case that it's a detriment to us? Is that changing?
I think it's state-determined, and normally, most years, the whole harmless clause is a, is a positive for a school to allow us to keep our revenue limit on where it was in the past, but in this odd year, in these odd circumstances where the state came through, with more funding, we have to work that off first. Is that right, Mr. Board? Is it state-determined?
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bosworth. To 9C, high school under-enrolled classes for first semester 2023-24.
Sorry. Okay, so this agenda item is, again, just for information. Policy 2312 has a policy regarding class size, and one of the things that it says in there is that middle school and high school sections with fewer than 10 students enrolled in the class must be reviewed by the Board of Education. In November, the board will get actual class and course sizes throughout the district, and then, in a perfect world, the board will then use those numbers to help guide what offerings and what staffing needs we would need in the future with those courses. So this is part of our new policy, very similar to what we've had in the past, but just a little bit more detailed in that policy. That's a live link there in the information, or in the background information. You will see, what, eight, nine different courses there here at the high school that are listed there. This is for quarter one. You'll see the current enrollment. Students are still in the process of making schedule changes. This, this could change a little bit as well, in terms of being a little more fluid. And then just a very basic summary there on the far right column on maybe why those are a little lower. High school administration is here as well, if you have any specific questions regarding that, or if they have anything to add, but again, this is just a topic that you will see periodically throughout the year, as the board just, is really giving a heads-up on some of the courses that don't necessarily have a lot of students in them. Mr. Lomke, Ms. Kirkens, anything to add? Any questions from the board? Okay.
To agenda item 10, action items, anti-bullying task force.
Okay, so about a month ago, Mrs. Brown, a principal at the intermediate school, along with Jessica Brown from Passages, approached administration regarding the possibility of starting a task force centered around bullying prevention and creating an atmosphere of where we didn't have bullying. And they presented to our administration, then, one of the last curriculum meetings, they presented to the curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee recommended that this move forward to the full board. And so Mrs. Brown, both Mrs. Browns are here tonight to give just a brief presentation on what this anti-bullying prevention task force looks like, and then looking for the board to take action on that recommendation from both the administration and the curriculum committee. Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you.
Should be a mic up there for you.
A mic, perfect, I'll use that. Another person that we have on here is also Michaela Kleeker. She is our school counselor as well, so we're saying the three of us. Okay, sure we will. So you guys will have this powerpoint in, not this one, because you don't want me to talk about this stuff, but we do have this one here. And so- Um, and so you guys should have it popping in front of you. We did adjust just a few things when it came to, um, things that include our curriculum that will be in. We're going to hold, there we go. Um, so again, thank you for having us. So again, this is our current group, we also have included Lisa Gott, the school site, um, through other administrative staff. So between the four of us, we're kind of spearheading this, but as we continue on, we're hoping to incorporate, um, more members within our staff and within our community.
Okay, so the purpose and the goals of this would be to teach and educate students at the intermediate school level, um, and then to decrease the numbers of bullying reports and increase positive and safe school culture. Collaborate with community organizations to help increase bullying awareness, um, and then create opportunities for students and parents and guardians to report bullying concerns, to collect data. Collaborate strategies and interventions that address the root of the bullying concerns. Uh, the steps to reach this goal would be to partner with Passages to increase the community involvement and support. Uh, we use DPI bullying prevention toolkit as a guide, um, teach tier-one classroom lessons focusing on bullying prevention, um, develop a reporting system, which would be a Google form, to allow students and parents and guardians to report bullying concerns. Uh, report quarterly to all stakeholders on data findings. Uh, we would have a memorandum of understanding between Richmond School District and Passages, uh, and once, if this is approved, then we put it in place right away. Um, so our time to come in the cost, so as Jessica was saying, we would be needing monthly as our group to really look at our data. And this would be looking at either, uh, the Google form, and then there's also another place on our school website that I'll be showing you as well, um, where we can also pull the data from and look at this. Along with this is using our bullying prevention curriculum in third through fifth grade. This is what we currently have in place, we'd actually still be using this with our sixth graders, because they have not necessarily seen this curriculum. So it's something we already have. Uh, along with that, in just specifically our building, um, we're bringing in other speakers. We have Brian Kenny, who will be coming once a quarter, um, to do team bonding, and, um, he'll be using sources of strength and other resources, uh, just to build that relationship piece with our students and our staff. Again, focusing on those connections that we want to make. As we continue, we still want to look at applying for grants, so we can continue to have those who have come into our building, um, to build that rapport with our students and staff. But overall, it's a voluntary task force. This will not be some that's paid, it's just, we have a mission and a vision, um, as to a lot of you here. That's why you wouldn't be here if you didn't have, um, if you didn't want to make our schools better. But again, it's all going to be voluntary, um, to continue forward. So as you mentioned earlier, we do have a DPI bullying prevention kit, and so we did use this as kind of our framework in our guidance. I'm not going to click on this, it is fifty-six pages long. Um, you will see some different snippets from this, records in our program, but if you want, you can go on to the electronic version and click on it and look through it yourselves. So, the biggest thing is, is that this was kind of the outline, um, of, sort of just the toolkit of what we need to do when it comes to bullying. Now, within our district, we do a great job already of, we define bullying, I have that, I think, on the next slide. And then we also, again, establishing our task force. Next is the reporting procedures. This is something that we've definitely been talking about as a district, and so again, we want to make it more uniform and come together. Um, and so you'll kind of see what we have, and again, on our school website, where you can go from there. Our investigation procedures are already in place, we are, that is done by our current administration, and then the decision-making process that is also done with, by our administration. The step that would come after that is to look at all of that data as a task force, to look at what is really going on. So again, as I said, our first step, we're not going to read this, but this is our current definition of what bullying is. When we looked at the DPI definition, it's very similar, not quite as wordy, but we get into a few more specifics, so it's really nice. So, nice job, original style. So then we have our tier-one intervention. This is where Michaela's going. So, um, as you saw, that we defined bullying, um, this is how we're going to, uh, do the prevention part and interventions. So tier-one is designed for all students. So I will be going into the classroom, um, teaching the curriculum, um, during October for grades third, fifth, and sixth. And then Jessica would come in and teach grade four. And then we'd also use that curriculum, um, to reinforce activities throughout the year. You might be wondering what curriculum we're talking about, um, something that we already have through the district. The second step, second step also has a bullying prevention unit. Um, when Jessica Brown reached out to DPI, uh, they sent her this resource, which is a framework and tier interventions from the University of Missouri Bullying Prevention Lab. And, um, second step was one of those, uh, evidence-based practices, so that's something that we already have, um, within the district. And this, this is an example of, um, the fourth and fifth grade scope and sequence. Um, in each, um, unit, uh, there's five lessons, so there's an introductory lesson. Um, lesson one is talks about recognizing bullying, reporting, recusing, lesson, one, two. So two would be the bystander's power, um, the bystander responsibility, and then the last one would be bystanders to cyberbullying. A neat feature with second step as well is they have different reinforcement activities. So within the lessons are lesson connections for kids to reflect and do different activities. And then there's classroom climate activities to promote positive interactions for students. Over here, where it's circled, um, that's also like at home for parents and kids to do as well. So part of this is something we're talking about just specifically in our building, this is kind of a timeline of what we're thinking, uh, what we're thinking, what we will be doing, uh, to help with this, with bullying prevention. So September, we already have blackout bullying, that'll be coming in, that's the Board had approved earlier, along with Brian Kenny. Then October will be second step, Brian Kenny coming back in November. Uh, our goal is to work with our local law enforcement and have them come in to talk about cyberbullying, because that's right for the holidays, and usually you kind of see an uptick of stuff when we get back as administration after the holidays. January, we're going to follow up to our second step lessons, again, Brian in February. March, we want to have somebody come in to do another sort of presentation, um, that can kind of go March, April, it can be a little dicey, depending on weather and whatnot. And then May, we'll do some sort of bullying send-off, and then Brian will come back in to wrap up the year with our students and our staff. So, step two of all of this was to establish our task force. Um, again, when we look at our prevention task force, we have a lot of decision-making, um, using data to drive those decisions, working on collaboration, shared leadership, understanding bias and perspective, having all the perspectives, and just continues to go around and around. Because again, this is something that does take time. As an administrator, when we get our bullying referrals that come in, it's not just a one-and-done Facebook idol, doing it and working and talking. I've reached out to many of my fellow colleagues of, hey, I need help walking through this. Um, and so there's that piece of it, but then there's also the task force of actually looking at our data and what is really going on. Because we do want to share with our community, um, an accurate picture of what is happening. So again, we look at our task force, this is a picture of who, and who they recommend. Um, so again, we have pretty much everybody within our school system. Um, the other piece in that we just recently added was our school resource officer. So that, again, will be another great tool to have, um, as we continue to navigate these waters. So again, this is one of our responsibilities, um, we're really going to focus on, uh, establishing, uh, or establishing a reporting protocol. So we do have ways to already do this, so we're trying to really get into the hands of our students and also our community. Are you coming through this district? No, I've definitely heard, oh, bullying is a big thing. Okay, is it bullying, is it conflict, what is it? Let's really dive down in and take a look at this. So again, with our task force, um, we really want to look at that data and really look at what is happening, so we can better, better educate our community, um, also our teachers, our students, and then ourselves, as we go forward. One other piece in this was they had an action plan. So I know this might be a little hard to read, um, but all the questions on the right are something that we went through and we took a look at. And so, again, is bullying a problem? Yes, it is. Uh, when we looked at the types of bullying, we identified racial, racial abilities, physical attributes, cyberbullying, intimidation, and eating threats. Again, it's not just happening in our schools, but also our community. So that's where this whole task force is working together, um, with Passages as a community partner and then also the school. Um, and the biggest, you can continue to read now, but the biggest thing is that we really want to work on just making sure everyone is aware of what it is, educating that piece. Um, but also feel like people have a voice, if you can come, we can talk about this, and then turning that negative perception of what bullying is around. So again, it's to build parent trust and understanding. It's going to take time, it's not something that's going to come overnight, but again, if you have a team that wants to work together to do this, that's good. So this was our, um, bullying report form, so I'm going to show you, hopefully here. We had two different ways. So the report form that you guys have, we did tweak it just a little bit to include pictures. Um, at the intermediate building, and then also at the primary and the high school, students can use this form. So what we have done is we have taken our district policy, we have put that in, we have put in our definitions. So when students go to fill this out, um, they can put their email, their name, the date. But then, what we went to add in there were also pictures. So for younger kiddos, um, they can just look, or even our students that maybe don't speak English or can't read English, they can also take a look. So it's a little bit different than what is on board drafts, but let's do that. And this will just be used to collect information. Again, um, once this is filled out, myself and Ms. Flecker will be notified. Uh, we're working on also being able to notify our other administrators as well, so that if something is filled out, we get those, and we can start looking at it. But this is a way to collect all the information right away, um, and that way we're not pulling somebody in and trying to ask all these questions, so we have that. So that's this way. The other piece, um, on our district website, so anybody can actually do this, under four parents, if you go down to our Richmond School District tip line, this is another way outside of the school data, if they don't have access to the Google form, um, that this can be done. So if we click on web, you can also report bullying, you can just report a general tip, a safety concern, or who knows. So again, another way for parents or outside community members to come forth and do that. Um, the other neat thing that we are working on is that this can also be translated to Spanish and French. So those of our parents who don't speak English, we can at least do that. And then, when I go here, um, it should, it, not all the questions, they don't know, but at least they can start to fill out some of this and try to make their way through. So again, not perfect, but it's at least an option there for our parents. Um, so again, I've kind of talked about this already, investigations we've done by district staff, along with decision-making, and then the task force, we'll be looking at our data, um, and then bringing that information back to whoever our stakeholders are that want to know more about it. So what is the why behind the committee? Um, this committee wants to help to educate and create a safe learning environment for all students and staff. This committee focused on one of the school board-approved goals by focusing on mental health and student connections. Our purpose is to make sure that our students learn that they have a voice and can stand up when they see something and experience something that is wrong. Advocating for life skills that go beyond the classroom walls and their time at the intermediate building. Through the use of sources, sources of strength, the second step, blackout bullying and other bullying prevention activities, students will have the opportunity to lose, to learn, and to use these skills. Okay, any questions? A lot of information, sorry. We talk in thousands, go down. But what questions do you guys have for us?
I have two, first, Mrs. Brown, Jessica Brown. Um, I'm a bit ignorant to it, but what is Passages exactly?
Uh, so Passages is a program for domestic violence and sexual assault survivors. Um, so we help in the community, and we help, um, we have different counties that we serve, um, Bering Cropper, Amish County. Um, so we help business in crisis, um, we also have a shelter as well for families that are fleeing from those situations as well, so.
Great, thank you. Second question, through all of your learnings so far, as you've compiled the kind of circular and the pyramids and et cetera, do you anticipate this being an easy transition to move up to this building for our school counselors in the seventh and eighth and then high school as well?
Yes, so I believe in high school seven, um, there'll be some other, to do stuff like the blackout bullying that will be done with seventh and eighth grade already. So a lot of what we're trying to do is the forms and everything like that can be used within our whole district. We're really just trying to kind of pilot this at our building, um, and really it starts at every elementary level. So we're really hoping that if we can form that base and that core knowledge and the common language that might be up here, they can just start to emphasize and elaborate and go in depth on that. I would say your seventh and eighth graders, you're going to have your home, your hornet hour, um, you'll have the check and connect. So it'll be different things that are kind of going to be happening up here, um, that will kind of play off of this. But again, it's not going to be something, we might not see change right away, but hopefully we can really start. And then in two years or three years, you know, we really have that data that can really drive, um, our decision-making and really hopefully see a change.
You say voluntary, if members of the community or parents would like to get involved, would they just reach out to you or Ms. Flecker?
Yes, yep, yep, one of us.
How are you presenting this to parents? There's no any challenges with being able to find information on it, or is it, are there going to be information being sent on with the students or the mass emails?
So I try to do a monthly email, and so the actual, my actual back-to-school one, um, will have information about all of this and where to find it. I know at an admin level, we were actually talking about the tip line, uh, how we can add that onto our homepage or somewhere, make it more accessible to parents. Because I really found that's just that educating piece, that has probably been there for quite a while, and I was just kind of clicking around and found it, and I was like, oh, interesting. Um, so it's just really educating our families, and so, yes, either, I mean, I personally would love to get more parents into our building, um, and have more like just sit down and talk. That doesn't always happen, time is a factor, but just trying to put it all out there, um, and this is kind of that first place to start. Is by coming to you guys, giving ourselves our voice, letting you guys hear it, and kind of go from there. So we'll see, but yes, I have faith that even at the primary and the high school, middle school level, they will be sharing all the same information too in some fashion.
And then as far as the language barrier piece, are there folks involved that can help with, um, educating parents that may make the, uh, English is not the primary language?
Um, so we've been meeting, uh, with a Latino family group within the community, and we have definitely talked about bullying and just different language barriers. So it's something that I'm hoping that we can kind of work with them on to kind of help educate. Because that is, it is a tough thing, and I really wish that I could translate in Spanish, if I could speak Spanish and do all that, I cannot. Um, so if we can have partners that could really help us with that, that would be fantastic. It'll be, that'll be a little bit tricky, but it's something that I know we want to take on because it is important. And I think through this group, um, not just our task force here, but through that group that we've been meeting with as an administrative team, we've learned more and more and are kind of coming up with creative ways of what we can do to help, not necessarily solve, but fix, or at least come to the table and have those discussions.
Thank you.
So the ask, um, from administration and the curriculum committee, um, will be the, the motion would be made to pilot this program, primarily at the intermediate school, and then, um, develop this task force in conjunction with some community members and school, and really take a deep dive into the data, get baseline data, and then really start to look at trends we're really facing as it relates to bullying. So that would be the recommendation from the curriculum committee as well as administration.
I have one question. So would this get in, once you get more data, would it get into the rubric that we use to determine the level of bullying?
It could.
To possibly tweak that?
Possibly. Um, I think in my eyes, and we really haven't talked about this as a task force, but in my eyes, and you guys don't think somebody would want to talk, but in my eyes, I think it's really just going to be looking at gathering the data and where are the conflicts or where are the bullying reports coming from? Is it outside of school events, is it in school? Um, and really just look at educating people what are, what is bullying, what is conflict? And then I would say after this year, our next year would be looking more at that data, because we'll have a year's worth of, okay, what's happening? What can we do now, and we can go from there.
Any other questions from the Board? Is there a motion then to approve the anti-bullying prevention task force as presented?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second, Mr. Ocho, discussion.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, you're a good.
On to agenda item ten, the approval of CCLC vehicles.
So the building's property and transportation committee, uh, met last week and reviewed, uh, bids. If I back up a little bit, they actually reviewed some of the bids in July, they've then extended that because some of the dealers were having a hard time getting, um, some information for us as it relates to leasing. information for us as it relates to leasing. That was extended at the last meeting here last week. They are recommending, they as in the Buildings and Property Committee, Transportation Committee recommending that the school lease two vehicles from Joan Chevrolet, that lease quote is attached in a PDF. And the two vehicles that we will be looking at leasing for three years for the purposes of the after-school staying program through the CCLC grant would be one 2023 Chevy Traverse, which is a seven-passenger vehicle, and one 2023 Suburban, which would be an eight-passenger vehicle.
All right, is there any questions from Mr. Board or the committee have anything else to offer?
So the CCLC grant covers the two-year lease agreement for both papers?
That is correct.
So there's zero out-of-pocket for the extra insurance?
Correct. We may have a dollar buyout at the end, at least, yes.
The hope was that three vehicles would be able to be leased, but unfortunately, the costs are just not, not where we had hoped, and it doesn't seem fair to take away from the kids and the programming of now and put it all on vehicles. So it was backed down to a recommendation of two, to try to meet somewhere in the middle.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the monthly lease of one Chevy Traverse and one Chevy Suburban from Joan Chevrolet for up to three years as part of the CCLC program grant?
I'll make that.
Motion of Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Bailey, any discussion? All right, aye?
Aye.
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 I make a motion, we move into closed session pursuant to section 19.851 C, D, and/or F, and of the Wisconsin statutes 118.125, to consider employment, promotion, compensation of employees discussing individual employee hiring and administrative evaluations for the purposes of discussing sale and/or purchasing of public property, and to discuss student enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The Board may take action on these items, these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.